Good evening, everyone. Please join me for a pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting for the city of Middletown. Today is January 17th, 2024. We're going to begin with a roll call. So, board member Keith Hollick.
Yes.
Board member Mary Ann Cavalero.
Here.
Okay. Rat Girl Show, board members Mark Woody and Wendy Rodriguez as absent this evening. Also like to recognize Walt Welch, building inspector, and our counsel, Rich Krogan. Next up, I'd like to ask for a motion from one of the board members to approve the minutes from our November 15th of 2023 zoning board of appeals meeting. Motion by Keith, second by Mary Ann. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, moving along. We have one item on the agenda tonight that would be an applicant from Orange Terrace. I would ask that the applicants please step forward, state their names, and a brief description of the project.
My name is Neil Frishberg from Fabricant Lippman and Frishberg. This project, as you know from other meetings, was originally, we sought a variance for a six-lot subdivision, and we are reduced, we had put in a new, we withdrew that application, and now seeking an application for a four-lot subdivision. The application, the application is, seeks a, from our perspective, a minor variance for the applicant. We don't think there will be an undesirable change in the neighborhood, and we think the benefits ought to be achieved by, there's no other way for the applicant to achieve the method. Essentially, we're seeking about a two-and-a-half-foot variance per lot, for two-and-a-half front-yard variance per lot. The lots require 75 feet. If you take the combined lots of six lots, divide them by four, you get frontage of 72.3 feet. That's about 3.6 percent. So, our view is that this is not a substantial variance. And if you look around the neighborhood itself, you'll see lots of lots with front yards of 50 feet, and most of them are less than 75. So, there's a letter that was submitted by Phil Dropkin, and that I handed today together with other documents. I just asked that they be part of the record. I'm not going to repeat what he said, but we stand by it. To the extent that you have engineering questions, I'm going to let, I'm going to turn it over to Al Fusco.
Neil, just one question for you.
Uh huh.
The only variance now that's being sought is the road frontage.
That's correct. I believe that's, that's all that's required.
Okay.
I believe, I think the lots are otherwise conforming.
Great. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Al Fusco, Fusco Engineering.
Al, just one quick question before you get going. You submitted a new proposal today.
Correct.
What was different between the new proposal and the proposal that was previously submitted?
Well, we received comments from the planning board engineer.
Zoning board engineer.
Zoning board engineer. Okay, I apologize. And we answered those questions. We modified it accordingly. I can go through his questions very quickly.
Sure, I just have one question for you.
Yes.
Was the road widened?
The roads shows erroneously 24 feet on the plan. It is going to be 30 foot.
Great.
Yeah, the road is going to be 30 foot. The plan, because we're in a hurry to do it, we didn't get this until, I don't remember when, a day ago. And we just went through it very quickly to be prepared for tonight's meeting. And I was just reviewing it, re-reviewing it now, and I saw that it said 24, it's going to be 30 feet wide.
Great.
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt you. Go ahead.
I was going to say that along the way, because I did bring the plans. There's a full set of plans here, if anybody wants to look at them, the public or anyone else. I have a word here, that basically, the change from when we first started is, you know, from, you know, the six lots were to four lots now. As our council had reiterated, that one of the lots is 75, the other is 72.3. So, the other three lots are, you know, a little bit shy, all right? What we've done is, we tried to answer the zoning board engineers' questions quickly.
Al, just to interrupt you one second. You said one of them is 75, so it's only three variances that you're asking?
There's only three that would be required, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Now, what we did, one of the questions we need, that was given to us, was a comment regarding water and sewer connections, and that is in regard to the EAF. We did submit a revised EAF, and we sent that out today, so it could be distributed. And we included that water and sewer permits are required by the city. In addition to that, the road extension is going to require a street opening permit. One of the other questions is about a bond, and, you know, the city will set the bond limit, and the corporation council will set the type of bond that they would approve. So, we have no objection to the bonding whatsoever. A lot of these had been corrected before. In regard to rain gardens, detention ponds, we've revised the plan that there are only going to be swales and rain gardens. There's not going to be any detention facilities. A rain garden is a detention facility, but we're not having anything quote-unquote a detention pond. Looking at the other area, it was concerned that we were going to disturb 41,800 square feet by having the retaining wall in the back. It was going to require removal of a lot of material, all right? We've re-graded the whole property, and we've come up with a revised disturbance area of 24,519 square feet, which is less than half an acre. It does not require us to accommodate the existing flows, just the new proposed flows. And that may be a planning issue, not necessarily ZBA, but we have reduced it. The engineer had asked us to look at all of the water coming down, as it stands now, and to, you know, facilitate its direction. Well, we've done that with swales and whatnot, but the burden upon us is actually to show that we're not creating additional runoff. We're going to hold back the runoff. So, we would show that, you know, in the planning aspect of it. Looking at the retaining walls, we made significant changes. Lot number one, the retaining wall has been eliminated completely. So, we're just going to regrade the property. Lot three, the wall has been significantly reduced in length. And therefore, the volume of material that's going to be coming off, that we had estimated at one point to be a enormous amount, is half of that. Now, talking about the trucking, someone had asked about the trucking, back and forth, and that's going to be reduced in half as well. But also, that's going to be done, you know, lot by lot. So, it's not going to be just mass trucking for, you know, a week or anything of that. There'll be, you know, a few trucks here, a few trucks there, not anything concentrated. Retaining walls, we understand that anything over four feet needs to be designed by an engineer. We're going to even design the short ones. But a permit would probably be taken out for retaining walls with the building department. Let's see, there was discussions about a chain link fence that, apparently, there was something about the appearance of it. So, what we're going to do is, when we do the retaining walls and take out a permit for it, we'll be discussing it with the owners of the property and see what type of fencing that they do want. And then we'll submit that plan to the building department for an approval. The location of the sewer, and the pump stations, and the distance separating them, has now been less complicated, because instead of six, there's only four. It makes it much easier to, you know, comply with the requirements as they are. Now, the plan for the six, at one, at one point, had been reviewed with the commissioner of Public Works. A plan for four had been looked at by the commissioner of Public Works, and, you know, of course, it's up to him to review this again, and the engineer, and see if it's accommodated. As far as I'm concerned, I believe it does meet the required codes. One of the things that was a concern is there's a manhole, and you put six pipes in the hole, even though they're only two inch, it creates an issue. So, now there's only going to be four. We designed the manhole with a knockout in it, and it will be built specifically for this purpose. Let's see. So, I talked about the separation. There was a question about if a leak occurs in one of the force mains. How are we going to figure out who it is? Well, that's fairly easy, is that you start at the, wherever the location is, you sort of get a little idea of it. It's on this side or this side, but sometimes it takes a different course up. So, what would be done is, the, either the DPW or the building department would cause diaphragm in the sewer, in the pump station, and one by one eliminate them. So, that's an easy enough fix. With today's material, you really shouldn't have that. It's not like old Orangeburg or anything like this. It's all sturdy pipe. Let's see. There was a question by the zoning board engineer as to who, how the city would maintain the rain gardens. Well, the rain gardens are going to be on private property, and they're to be maintained by the property owner. We're going to state it very clearly on the plans, and so they will have knowledge of it, and they will be maintained by the property owner. This is not unusual. It's, you know, everywhere in New York. Bio-retention swales, there's a question about them. We've removed them, and we're doing grading squales, grading swales, and rain gardens. We're also going to provide inlets from the footing drain and the roof leaders, so it all goes into the rain garden. Bio-retention swales have been revised, and are no longer going to cross property lines. At one point, one looked like it was going over the property line a little bit. We moved that over, and each rain garden will be on each property, separate, with no encroachment to each other. We're going to put driveway culverts in and label those, and we've done a cross-section of the road that we're going to change, because it was, again, 24 feet. It will be 30 feet. And the last thing that the engineer asked was a silk fence detail, and we replaced it with a New York State DEC detail. Basically, that's all I have, other than to say that the impact on the area has been greatly reduced by changing this from six to four, and the accommodations that we've made, we believe, will be sufficient to allow the project to proceed.
Al, I have two questions for you.
Yep.
The pump station.
Yes.
Who's going to be responsible for maintaining that?
Each individual, there'll be four of them. Each individual homeowner will be responsible for the pump stations.
And the retaining, retaining wall?
Retaining wall will be separated, and each one will have their own responsibilities.
Sure, but the city is going to need an easement for that?
No, no.
What if it fails, and the homeowner doesn't do anything? How is the city going to protect?
I've never seen the city do that once in my entire career, so.
Walter?
They're not big walls. They're not big walls.
Do you have anything on that?
Not at all. I never heard of that.
Okay.
Now, the city can force a property owner to repair a wall, and if they don't, they can be taken to court. And if it's dangerous, the city can go in there and bill them to fix the wall. But they don't need an easement for that.
Open the public hearing. Okay. If the applicant's done with their presentation, we'd like to open up the public hearing for any comments related to this project.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Name's Peter Broker.
Okay.
I live on Orange Terrace. Lived there probably most of my life. And this is about the 10th meeting I had to go to regarding this project. This new proposal is nothing new. In fact, it was voted down on 10-5 by the common council. We still are dealing with four homes instead of three. We're not building on 75-foot lots as we're supposed to. There are 28 homes on Orange Terrace, and only three are on 50-foot lots. Now, I just heard that the road is going to be increased from 24 feet to 30 feet.
Correct.
That was one of my concerns. But the turnaround in the back is still an issue. There's not enough room for a garbage truck to turn around, let alone a fire truck or whatever.
Mr. Broker, just to interject for a moment. I did speak to Theron Atkins today. I saw him when I had a meeting at 3:45 here in the city, and I asked him about that. And he said the hammerhead does meet the requirements for the fire trucks.
But there is not a hammerhead listed on the new map.
Mr. Fusco?
There is, there is a turnaround shown.
Please speak into the microphone.
Yes, speaking.
There is a turnaround shown. On the previous plan, we had it included up to the property line, and we will reinstate that up to the property line. So, it will be a hammerhead.
Thank you.
I really don't think that's going to work, Al. You're going to dig into that one building lot on the very end to make that turnaround, or that hammerhead possible.
Mr. Broker, if you could address the board, and then we'll have Al address your comments at the end.
All right. Now, to get away from that, if you approved this, you need to consider Clinton Street, what could be the possibility of 18 homes if they were built on smaller lots? That would really raise hell with the neighborhood. We already have one person that bought six lots on Clinton Street, but he decided to buy all six, but put every other lot on a different name. So, he's trying to be slick and get away with this 50-foot lot proposal. I built, I bought, years ago, I bought three 50-foot lots, and I wanted to build on the lots. But I couldn't build, because Mr. Fusco told me I couldn't. I need to subdivide to 70-foot lots, which I eventually did. There are at least another three, four cases where people wanted to build on 50-foot lots but were denied by the common council. Now, why are we, why is this being changed? And there's enough room here legally to put three homes up and not four. They put up to three homes, they have plenty of room for that turnaround that they need. It's a little bit disappointing that this thing has lasted this long. I mean, it's almost a year we've been fighting with this thing. Doesn't seem fair. Doesn't seem right. If you let this go fly, it's not going to be good for the city, and certainly not good for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just, Mr. Broker, for the record, an applicant is entitled to come before the zoning board with a request.
Understand.
So, every application is unique, and the facts and circumstances have to be dealt with. So, no two, we're not setting a precedent based upon one case as opposed to other ones that may come before us.
Fine. Yeah.
Louis Villafane, and I live in 19 Orange Terrace, and I agree with everything that Pete says there. Now, there's 28 homes, three are 50-foot, okay? And I'm hoping that every member of this council will go out there and see the neighborhood. I'm not talking about, because they bring the entire, whole damn neighborhood. I mean, Conklin, Arlington, Madeline Lane, I mean, everything. We are on Orange Terrace, okay? And if you walk that, from Orange Terrace, you'll see how nice that block is, spacious, because that was what was required. It was required by, by Pete, and when Jack Stack built my house, he was forced to build on 75 or greater, okay? And they're saying it's going to change, it's not going to change the character. It will change the character of Orange Terrace, okay? Wherever there is a spot they want to pull a little home, I mean, enough is enough, okay? Please apply the law that you did back then, apply it now, okay? And I don't mean no more, my school taxes will continue to go up because they're building more houses. Wherever they have a little space, they want to build a house. I mean, enough is enough. I mean, and never mind about the, it's nice they ain't building six, but still, four, it's, it's, it's not the legal requirement. Three is suffice, and you'll have enough for that turnaround too. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public comment? Hearing none at the moment. We'll go to the board. We'll go to the board for comments, if you have any.
I have questions.
Okay.
Explain to me, the road is going to be 30. Explain to me what the 50 means. What, what are you talking about?
There's, there's a 50-foot right-of-way, all right? There's a 50-foot, the, the city will get a deed for 50-foot worth of road, but the pavement will only be 30 feet. That's like every city street, most city streets in Middletown.
Let me tell you why I'm questioning you. I have a nice cozy apartment in an apartment complex where there is one way in and one way out, and on a daily basis, everything is fine. But if there's an emergency, a fire call, a death call, whatever it is, we get two to four fire trucks, we get two to three police officers, cars, we get ambulances, one to two, we get the fire chief's truck, I'm glad he's there, I'm not complaining, and we also get the fire police, who I give a lot of credit to, because we're off of a very busy road, traffic gets stopped, and nobody's coming in or out until the emergency is satisfied. That's my concern, and I don't know how the 50 helps the 30. That's what I need explained to me.
Okay. Well, the 50 only helps the 30, because now you can have a 50-foot turnaround, you know, the hammerhead we're talking about. It's like you have 30 in the middle and then 10 feet on each side. So, you have 50 feet to turn around a vehicle, all right? Now, the big fire trucks, they're going to back down, and they only have to back down 200 feet with the aid of fire police. I don't care what road you're on, if you have two ways coming in, when you have a fire, they come in both ways, both ways are blocked completely. That's where the fire police come, and the firemen help, and make sure that everybody that needs to be at the particular scene can be there. I know this because for 25 years, I was in charge of the entire fire company. So, it, 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 it does look unnerving, but like I said, even if you have two ways in, the fire trucks are mandated to go two different ways, so that if one fire truck doesn't make it, the other one can. So, you're blocking it in from both ends anyway, you know? And in this case, you'll have one, you know, coming up one of the side streets, one on another side street, just to avoid any duplication of an accident that might slow one of the fire apparatuses up. That's why they send three trucks. But again, it's not different from 20 or 30 areas in the city of Middletown that have similar dead-end areas.
Let me address the question that they had, and I know you can't answer me, but it makes sense to me, as not being an engineer, when they say three houses make more sense because you have more room for that hammerhead.
Well, you, you, you only have more room if you take some room away from one of the lots.
Right.
Because right now, the road's 50-foot wide. That's it. The road's 50-foot wide.
It is 50, not 30.
Well, the paved area on the hammerhead will be 50, right? The pavement to drive up to it will be 30.
My other question that I actually just came across tonight, when you were talking about sewerage, and everybody having their own.
Right.
And the runoff.
Right.
How does that affect?
Thank you.
Can the sewer runoff as well as the runoff?
Sewers are in an enclosed system, so the sewer would come out of the house, goes into a pump station. The pump station goes into a pipe, and the pipe goes into the manhole. So, that's all a closed system. There'll be no runoff from sewage. Relating to the water, there's existing water that comes down there now, coming off of Mountain Avenue, coming off the lots itself, right? And there's absolutely no control of that right now. Now, the engineer's function on this, me as the engineer, our function on this is to make sure that no additional water comes off because of the building being put there, and whatever else is there, a little blacktop for the driveway. We take that into account, and to account, that's why we're putting in drainage swales. Now, the swales will direct the water into the swales. The swales will be of porous material, rock, and they can enter back into the earth, and then they're going to go into a rain garden, which will release the water slowly, so you're holding the water back. And that's the function of the, the protection. Now, if this was a larger project, more than an acre of disturbance, we'd be required to put in a detention pond, put in underground infiltration, but it's not that case. But there's going to be no more water coming down the hill than comes down now.
I appreciate your answers. Thank you.
You're more than welcome.
I just have one question. On these swales and rain gardens, is there going to be any protections here, let's say, five years from now, after the houses are built and you guys are long gone? One of these homeowners decide they want to put a pool in their backyard and do some landscaping and fill in these swales and re-divert the water another direction?
It, it's always an issue, but what we, what we put on the plans is a special note and highlight it that relates to the homeowner, that they have an obligation to protect that. Now, the other thing is, the city building department has a number of inspectors, and even though they may not see it immediately, eventually it'll come to somebody's attention. It might even be when they go to sell the property, but they will find out eventually. I know, because I also run 11 building departments, and we always catch it at that point, and then we tell them that they have to do it, and if they don't, then, you know, we take action, take them to court.
Keith, as a follow-up to that, the, when the site plan gets approved, if it got approved, it would have those swales on it and the retention or the gardens on it, so they would have to remain. Now, the building department would also have a copy of the site plan, so they could go in and inspect and make sure those are still there. in and inspect and make sure those are still there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else here for public comment? All right. So there's some new design information that was submitted recently, along with an EAF form that was just submitted and still needs to be reviewed, along with some other documentation. So at this point, if it pleases the rest of the board, I'd like to, excuse me, keep the public hearing open and hold this topic for future consideration, this application, I should say.
Sure.
Does that satisfy council?
That would be in the form of a motion for the board. If you so desire, you make the motion and it's put over. I see Neil coming up. Who would like to be heard on that?
If you don't mind.
Sure thing.
So, it seems to me that the public has had an opportunity to be heard in this, and you can still make a deliberation. You're going to have to wait till next ZBA meeting anyway, because you're waiting for the Orange County Planning Board.
Yes.
So it seems to me that you can close the public hearing and still review these documents without the public hearing being open. So I would ask that the public hearing be closed, if it pleases the ZBA, and that there's no harm, because you can still deliberate on the same documents at the next meeting, because you're going to have to have another meeting anyway.
Sure. My only question, and again, it's a board decision, is that we've gotten a design tonight now. So changes based upon the engineer's comments. The engineers are going to still be consulting, and we don't know if new design will be presented. So that would be my argument, is that we don't know that this is the final, that the public had a fair opportunity then.
All right, I understand.
Thank you. So there's a motion pending, if anyone wants to make that motion.
Can I say something?
The last time you closed the meeting and you had another meeting, they came up with something new, and since you closed the public, we had no way to say anything. So again, keep the public open, because it gives us a chance if they come up with something else, and we could say something on that account.
Understood.
Thank you. Plus, we have two board members absent this evening, so they would have to get caught up to speed as well.
So. I think Mary Ann made the motion.
I make a motion that we keep it open to the public.
Okay.
My second.
All right. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, so public hearing stays open.
Al, I would just recommend for you to get in touch with Christian. And keep the correspondence open to get everything finalized.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all for your comments, and sorry to bring you out on a cold night.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I'd like to ask for a motion for adjournment.
Thanks, Keith.
Mary Ann, second by Keith. All in favor? Aye. The ayes have it. Good evening.